Call the meeting to order, Karen, if you can call a roll.
Okay, President Furman?
Present.
Vice President Curry?
Here.
Alder Bennett? I'll come back to Alder Bennett. Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Figaro Cole?
Here.
Alder Foster? Alder Heck?
Here.
Alder Abbas? Alder Foster?
Here.
And Alder Bennett is not here. You do have quorum.
Um, thank you. Um, so first order of business would be approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion? Actually, I'm sorry, we should have the tech intro because we do have a registrant.
All right. Hmm. Okay. Sorry about that. I'll just run through it here. Uh, welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members of the committee, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please activate your video when you're speaking in this meeting. Panelists have the ability to mute and unmute themselves. Panelists also have the ability to add pronouns after their names if they choose. Uh, please do not all alter the current naming convention, simply add text after your name. Please use the raise hand feature if you'd like to be recognized to speak or, uh, if you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Uh, staff, please use the raise hand feature if you're asked a question. Uh, lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. Staff will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the committee, please, uh, send it to the email listed on today's agenda. President Furman, floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Uh, the first order of business will be approval of minutes. Can I get a motion?
Well, it's approved minutes.
Can I get a second? Thank you, Alder Conklin, for the second. Um, any questions, comments, concerns, corrections on the minutes? Seeing none, I'm going to consider anonymous consent unless I see otherwise. And when we move on to public comment, it does look like we have, um, no registrant for general public comment, but we do have a registrant, um, for, um, items on our agenda. And so we'll get to them, um, when we get to those items. Um, the, so, uh, the next would be disclosures and recusals. Do any, uh, members of the body have any disclosures or recusals under the city's ethics code? Okay, uh, Vice President Curry, go ahead.
Thank you, President Furman. Um, just to disclose that I work for YWCA Madison, um, as it might come up in conversation today during, um, the resolution regarding the discrimination harassment policy.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, um, our, uh, uh, seeing no others, we'll go ahead and move on to items for consideration on our agenda this evening. Um, the first item is item two, legislature number seven zero six five zero, amending section three, three dot zero, one, seven D of the Madison General Ordinance regarding cancellation of subunit meetings. Um, we do have one registrant, um, Ann Kovach, um, is with us. Um, Ann, uh, uh, go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, I always wonder why people say, can you hear me? But I guess I need to check.
We can hear you.
Okay, excellent. Thanks. Um, I sent you an email, so I won't, uh, bore you by going through everything, but I, I am opposed to this change. Um, part of why I'm here tonight is I've been serving on city boards, committees, and commissions. I can't even remember how many over 30 years worth. Served on at least, um, three different BCCs as chair. And I have never had an issue with meetings being canceled for any other than legitimate reasons. And I'm not aware of it being a common problem. And I just think it's inefficient and unnecessary for the chair to be required to consult with the vice chair before canceling a meeting. You know, if it's not a common problem, why make the change? And lastly, I'd just point out, um, as you're all well aware, um, thirty-three oh one was modified last November by the common council, giving options for the NEBCC, uh, to, um, change their mind and, and make a change if the chair isn't doing their job or if they've lost confidence. And the common council also has this, um, ability to remove a chair for cause if they're not doing their job. So, you know, I just don't see that an additional change is needed. So, I, I felt, uh, strongly enough about it to come and talk with you about it tonight.
Thank you, Ann. Are there any questions for Ann? Not seeing any. Um, I just want to get some clarification. We have a Patrick Delmore, who is a panelist. Um, it's my understanding that he's the chair of the water board, uh, water utility board. Um, I, uh, Patrick, I wanted to know if this is an item you were here to speak on, and if so, um, I would ask that you register to do that. Um, is this, is this why you're here for this item or?
Um, Alder Worley invited me, uh, to attend, uh, based upon the item related to the Water Utility Board Self-Evaluation Form, which I think is on your agenda.
Sure. So that'll be on the agenda later. If you wish to speak on that, I recommend you register to speak on that, please.
Okay, uh, I'm not sure how to go through that process.
Um, we'll go ahead and, well, well, yeah, um, Karen will send you information on how to register and then you're happy, uh, more than happy to hear, um, during public comment, um, uh, your, your thoughts on that item. Alder Rehilly, go ahead.
Uh, Karen, could you please also send to Krishna?
Um, sure, he's a member of staff. Um, so I, I, you know, he can be, uh, people can ask him questions during staff questions. Um, but, uh, you know, members, members of other committees, just like Ann, this evening, registered to speak on this item and other items. Members of other committees, um, are requested to, to sign up as public speakers. They're, they're not considered panelists or, or staff. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Um, thank you, Ann, again for your testimony. We're gonna continue with item number two. Um, I, I will, uh, give Alder Rehilly an opportunity to speak on her item, and then if anybody has questions for, for, uh, staff, um, or discussion, um, we, we can go ahead and do that. So Alder Rehilly, would you like to speak on your item? Um, uh, you're muted.
So this item came in light of, uh, a couple of, uh, things that happened, and I think I'm, you know, sometimes we don't make things happen out of the blues. And there have been various meetings that has been canceled. Uh, that includes the, uh, the Public Review Committee, the TFA, and then the COB. And sometimes, you know, we, I agree that if the chair is entrusted with some responsibility to lead that BCC or that commission or board. But then if there is, uh, there's no, uh, clear expectation, clear communication, then that kind of brings some, uh, problem as it happened with the other, uh, three committees that I've just mentioned. So in order for that not to happen again, you know, we are just introducing this, um, ordinance where it's just, uh, form of, you know, uh, responsibility, accountability, to have clear communication as of when meetings should be canceled and to have some strong partnership with the, uh, the vice chair and the chair. So that it's not just the chair who's leading the effort, but more in collaboration with the vice chair. So it, it's not something that's very punitive, but it's kind of a way to set the stage in terms of how we can be able to conduct our BCCs. The other thing is, you know, when we are trying to invite other, uh, communities of colors to serve on these BCCs, and they are not really heard or not really included in the conversation, that negates the purpose of, uh, serving in the BCC. So this will just give a clear clarification, expectation, and accountability. So I'm here to answer any questions, and I hope you will consider, you know, uh, voting for this and so that chairs know their responsibilities, but also in collaboration with the vice chair. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Alder. Um, I just wanted everybody to know what the format will be this evening. We're going to do, um, questions, um, for, for staff. Um, it sounds like Alder Rehilly is open to questions as well. Um, and then we would do discussion, and then I will ask for a motion. So we're gonna wait until discussion is done on this evening before, uh, on each item before we do motions. Um, and so with that in mind, does anybody have any questions, um, for, for the Alder or for, for staff? Uh, Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
So who, who from staff is in these, manage these, um, these, this change?
Um, I'm sorry, who from staff would ma- manage this change? Um, meaning if it happens, who would make sure that this was the case?
Who am I asking questions from?
Um, you could ask Attorney Haas is here. Um, uh, as far as staff members, um, uh, we have our chief of staff. Um, I think those are probably the only two.
Sure, I'll throw the question out and, and, and if someone has the answer, please, please let me know. So was there any kind of data analysis done to see how many, how often do you see shockers? And, and if this is a, a something of, of great concern, just as the caller expressed on, on her testimony? Do you have any data to justify this change?
Um, Alder Rehilly, go ahead.
I'm, I'm not getting the question. I'm sorry.
I think, I think she's asking, is there any data that talks about how much of a problem this is? You, you mentioned, um, three different committees where you saw, um, cancellations that you didn't think the, the vice chair was, was consulted. Um, is there any, 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 any additional like data, like there were 12 meetings or whatever it is?
I, I think, you know, with the, uh, uh, with one of the meetings, it was three meetings that have been canceled. One, one other meeting was one canceled, and then, I mean, two of the meeting, one time was the meeting canceled, and then one of the other meeting committee, three times was canceled. But I'm asking, was there any, any reach, uh, reach? How reached down to all, to other committees to get their input and their feedback on, to see if this is an issue for them?
You mean for the ordinance to send?
For all the committees, all the other committees that we have on the, on the books.
I, I don't think so. No, we have not done to reach out to other committees. No.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Figaro Cole. Uh, Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thank you. This question is for, uh, Attorney Haas. Um, the, the proposed ordinance says that, uh, the chairperson will consult with the vice chairperson or co-chairperson. Um, it doesn't, it doesn't, my, my reading of that, that it doesn't require the, necessarily the cooperation of, of those folks. It would, it just says consult. Do you, do you have a interpretation of what consult means in this circumstance?
No, I, I agree. It does not mean that the vice president has to agree. I, I believe that's all. There also Alder Rehilly's understanding of her proposal, but that's how I would interpret it. It just says to consult.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Any other questions? Uh, move on to then discussion. Um, any, any discussion on this item? Alder Paulson, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so I think that some guidance on, on cancellation, I, I think it would be generally useful. Um, I don't know that it would have mattered, uh, in committees that I've chaired or, or been members of, because we haven't really had that as a problem. I'm a little salty. Staff once canceled, uh, a meeting on us where I wish that they hadn't, um, uh, or had consulted with us, uh, but that's not directly addressed here. Um, my one concern with this is, um, the fact that if the consultation doesn't happen, the cancellation is, is undone, and that's, that's, that's not workable. All right, that's, um, that, that can't stay in this one. This is gonna work. Um, once you ring the cancellation bell, you can't unring that. Um, uh, so, so I think it's fine to, to maybe put a little more guidance to committees to say, here's how you should go about, uh, doing a cancellation. But unfortunately, once you say it's canceled, uh, the members of the public are gonna hear that. Members of the committee are gonna hear that. Uh, it's, it'll be chaos if, if it turns out that, oh, by the way, the meeting is now uncanceled. Um, uh, so that just, uh, just from a implementation standpoint, this is, that will last too much. And so I think that's gotta be removed from, from the proposed change. Um, if, if the CCEC moves this forward, or if this comes forward to the full council. Um, so that's all I've got on this one. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Alder Paulson. Alder Heck.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I, I tend to agree with Alder Paulson. I feel like this creates more problems than it corrects. And, um, I, I, I do also take issue with, uh, the description of some public safety review committee meetings being canceled unilaterally, therefore causing some problem. Um, I don't think it, it really was necessarily the case, but you know, perhaps we can discuss that. But, but generally, I'd say, uh, this creates more problems than it, than it would fix. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Alder Foster.
Thank you. Um, yeah, in, in my experience, uh, meeting cancellations are almost always, uh, due to lack of quorum, um, and, and my experience on BCCs, and I am, um, reluctant to put restrictions on the ability to cancel meetings because in the effect of that, if there really is a quorum issue is, means if for some reason you couldn't get ahold of a vice chair, which could be one of the reasons a meeting even has to be canceled if they're just simply not available. Sometimes they don't even exist. Um, for a, a period of time, you'd be in a situation where we know that a meeting won't happen, but we have to leave it on the books. It's noticed. Members of the public potentially, some members show up, wait their 15 minutes, and then the meeting is effectively canceled because there's not quorum. So I, um, I, I, I don't think it's worth, um, putting the potential for that to happen in there. And I guess I agree with, uh, Ann's comment that, um, if, if there's concern with a chair, um, canceling meetings inappropriately, it really seems like there, the committee should deal with that chairship, um, because that, to me, would represent a, a more significant problem. So I think if, if cancellations are happening um, in what seems to be an inappropriate reason, um, then I would, I think the, the committee should deal with that there and not, um, put additional barriers or restrictions on the, on the chair to be able to cancel a meeting that needs to get canceled. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Any other discussion? Not seeing any, I'd be willing to entertain a motion. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Uh, I would move to place on file.
Can I get a second? Alder Heck, second, um, and we can discuss the motion. Alder Rehilly, go ahead.
Can we put on file without prejudice? The foster.
Alder Foster, would you be willing to, uh, modify?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Alder Heck, are you, uh, okay with, uh, seconding, uh, place on file without prejudice? Okay, any, any discussion, um, uh, about the motion? Okay, not seeing any. Unless I see a hand, I'm going to assume approval by anonymous consent. Okay, um, our next item, um, on the agenda, um, I actually like to take, um, unless there's an objection from the body, I'd like to take up the next two items together, um, since they are linked. One's an ordinance change, and then one is the actual, um, evaluation form related to the ordinance change. Um, so it's item three, seven zero six four five, um, uh, creating a self-evaluation, and then it's the actual evaluation form. Um, item four on our agenda, seven zero six six seven. We do, I think, believe have at least one registered speaker, um, Ann Kovach. Um, Ann, um, you are welcome to speak, and, um, because I did combine the two items, and I didn't see any objection. Um, if you'd like to speak for more than, uh, if you'd like to speak for a total of six minutes, you're, you're welcome to do that. And, uh, go, uh, Ann, you should be able to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Yep, I see it now. Thank you. Um, I sent you some very long emails, um, about these two topics, and I am, um, spending this lovely day here talking to you about it because I, I think it's really important to share, um, my background and, and my thoughts with regard to, um, both of the items. I really am not in favor of having a requirement that, um, everybody on the BCC either completes or discusses a self-evaluation form at the end of each meeting. And I'll talk about the numerical ranking form in a minute. Um, I, I, in my job, um, and also in my, um, LLC that I, I operated separately, did, uh, professional education for well over 30 years. And, you know, this is not the type of evaluation form that really gave us meaningful information, uh, to make changes. So that's, that's one item that I think is, is important to consider. Uh, doing it at every meeting also diminishes the impact. Putting it at the end of a long agenda, Alder Foster, well, is well aware of, sometimes we've had four, five-hour TC meetings, and, you know, who's gonna, you know, have any brain cells left to think about doing an evaluation form at the end of that? Um, so I really don't think it would provide meaningful feedback. As a result, I, I just don't think that it would meet the goal of, um, improving communication and equitable engagement. Um, and, you know, making our already long meetings longer isn't gonna make anybody happy. Uh, but as I mentioned in my, in my meeting, I think that if you want to consider doing something, I would suggest, um, something a little bit different. And that's putting on, um, a requirement that at least on an annual basis, every BCC considers discussing, um, either racial equity and social justice, or, um, equity and inclusion, however you want to word it. Uh, because the equitable engagement of its members, communication and equitable engagement of its members is really talking about inclusion. And really talking about racial equity and social justice. And I'm gonna use our experience at the Transportation Commission because we have been doing this. And since 2020, we've been talking about racial equity and social justice, working from the folks from that division and, and in a lot of different ways and some small groups outside. As a group together, we had a long discussion about TC practices related to, to equity and inclusion. And it focuses not just on the general public, but also on how we interact with each other at, at the Transportation Commission. Um, you know, we have those reminders at the top of our agenda at every meeting. I don't know if people pay attention to them, but that would be one really meaningful thing that we could consider doing. So I'm very much in support of self-evaluation and self-improvement and spent a lot of my life devoted to actually doing that. Um, and, and while the form may be useful to the water utility, I can tell you, as a chair of the Transportation Commission, it wouldn't give me the information that I would need to try and help facilitate change. Because, you know, and I gave you a lot of details already about, about the form. I just don't think it's gonna give you the information that you need. I've seen a lot of people fill out these numerical rankings. Some people make them all the highest. Some people make them, they never give anything the highest. They fill them out really fast. They don't give them thought. And you don't get the information you need. You need to hear from them exactly what they're thinking about and what their comments are. Um, so having an agenda item where you actually have a discussion is great. Not having it required at every meeting. I mean, we meet twice a month at TC. Again, it's gonna become routine, mundane, and not meaningful. Um, and I think the city attorney's office needs to be involved because a lot of times people make recommendations, oh, let's do this. Well, we can't under city ordinances, under city guidelines and procedures. So having a meaningful discussion is much more valuable. And relative, I do have to make this point, um, because again, really detailed person, read a lot of legal documents in my job, wrote a lot of policies and procedures, worked on implementing them. The instructions offer option three, which is the least painful for a BCC the way I'm reading it. But the way it reads, I'm not sure it would comply with what is drafted, um, as the proposed, um, ordinance change to thirty-three oh one. And, you know, to me, that's an issue. Um, so I think that's really important to, to make sure that we have consistency there. Um, and I would remind you, a lot of the things that are talked about in that evaluation form are the job of the chair. If the chair is not doing their job, then hey, find a different chair. And so, you know, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it would be a good idea to have people fill out a form that they're gonna hate to fill out, that they're gonna feel isn't useful. And, you know, it's just gonna frustrate them, and they're gonna say, it's gonna be one more reason why people aren't gonna wanna participate in being a member of a BCC. So, um, you know, I, I, I would hate to see that occur. I think it's valuable to have discussions about self-improvement. Um, and I think there's a better way to accomplish what you're talking about. And I would encourage you to expand the topic to include, include both equity and inclusion. So, uh, thanks for your time. And you can tell I feel strongly about this, and I'm happy to talk to anybody offline about it, uh, because I do have, uh, many, many, many years of experience in talking about these kinds of things.
Um, thank you, Ann. Um, Alder Rehilly, I think I'm actually just gonna take the other speaker, and then we'll do questions afterwards for the speakers. Um, so we, we do have another, um, speaker, um, signed up, um, Patrick Delmore. He is representing the Water Utility Board. Patrick, you're signed up just for number four, but you're welcome to speak on number three and four since they're linked, and, um, you do have up to six minutes, since it's two items. Um, Patrick, you should be able to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm vice president of the Water Utility Board, and I have served on the board for nine years. Uh, I developed the form that I think is part of the discussion tonight, uh, in 2019. And we have used it with the Water Utility Board since that point. Uh, I was a teacher and principal in the Madison school system for 33 years. And we use similar types of things in doing various meetings. Uh, and, uh, sometimes they're referred to as working agreements. And sometimes they're referred to as working agreements or similar types of titles. The, as you read through what we're using in the Water Utility Board, it's basically seven items. One of the particular items relate to Water Utility Board policy. But the other items are much more global. And I think it promotes the idea of, let's see, I'm can't start because okay, I, I, I hope you can continue to hear me, the video for some reason.
Patrick, we can hear you.
Yep, we shut your video off because you're a public registrant.
Okay, and the the items that you see are pretty straightforward. I think what it does is it promotes civil discourse on the board. It also reminds people of responsibilities generally of a good board member. And it is particularly helpful when you are dealing with contentious issues. And again, it has has worked well. And Alder Whirly asked me to share the experience and the form with you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Are there questions for either Anne or Patrick? Alder Wehili, go ahead.
Thank you, President. I have a question for Anne. Anne, thank you for your comment. I truly appreciate. I was Commissioner at the Transportation Commission last before for last year. And my question to you is, have you read about the President's Work Group on Racial Justice, Anti-Racism, and Equity Report that came out of this evaluation form?
I'm sorry, say, which report are you talking about? I'm sorry.
The President's Work Group on Racial Justice, Equity, and Racism. That came out of, in addition to the Water Utility, there has been a lot of reports based on the BCC, how you make the chair and the committee more engaged into the work of the city. So I'm wondering if you have read that recommendation report that was given by this, by the committee, President's Work Group.
I have not read that particular report, no. We've been working with Tarek and Christie and Rebecca over at the Division of Racial Equity and Social Justice in terms of, very specifically on the Transportation Commission, wanting to further include racial equity and social justice in our work and focusing on increased accessibility of TC and TC materials. We worked with city staff on doing some training, which we took between February and and April with regard to racial equity and bias. And so we've been working specifically with them. I'm certainly interested in reviewing that report. So if somebody would wouldn't mind sending me a link, I, you know, I try and keep up with everything at the city as Alder Foster, Alder Furman, and others know who I work with more frequently. But I'd certainly be happy to take a look at it. I'm just telling you, my experience with this type of ranking and knowing how people fill out the forms and knowing the people that I work with on, at least the BCC that I'm on right now, this forum wouldn't give me the information that I would need to try and make any improvements. You know, we would have to have a conversation. And so why have the forum if you can just have the conversation?
Thank you. And my other question is, how long have you been the Chair of the TC, Transportation Commission? And what has been some of the initiatives that you you talked about, you know, working with the city, Tarek and Christie? But as a chair, you know, how, what are the strategies that you have developed in making the the commission more engaged and more equitable as the chair?
Okay, well, we, I've been actually the Chair of the Transportation Commission since it was formed about four years ago. Actually, was just reelected last Wednesday. And we spent, geez, I think it must have been about ninety minutes talking about equity and inclusion at the June twenty-second meeting. I worked with Tom Lynch and Yang Tao in a small group with regard to a joint TC and TPPB training on racial equity, bias, inclusion, and diversity. And Urban Triage did a six-session training, six-session training from February through April of 2022, after we worked through the whole city process. The members of the Joint TC and TPPB Traffic Commune Subcommittee worked with the city's racial equity and social justice folks with regard to developing the Safe Streets Madison Program. They helped us work with the tools on that particular initiative. I met with Tarek Sakoff on the agenda item, how to incorporate racial equity and social justice in the TC work plan. Excuse me, we met, I'm actually reading my summary from last week's meeting, so I had it, brought it just in case. And we added that to our work plan, how to incorporate, renewing our commitment to racial equity and social justice at least twice a year. I've been working with another group on accessibility of TC and TC materials because we have someone who's legally blind on the commission and didn't have great access to our materials. So we're working on an initiative to make the materials more accessible to everybody. And that's spilled over to making the TC more accessible as well. And we had a great discussion about the training session. We talked about next steps, and one of the next steps actually is focused on how to make the upcoming public hearing with regard to the Metro Transit network redesign more accessible to to everybody. And so that's just kind of what we've been working on, I would say, since 2020 in particular.
Thank you. And you talked about a couple of initiatives, but I haven't heard any deliverables per se. And, you know, when you talk about more of the, you know, there's more internal experience versus external. The external customers are the constituents who are calling in how we can give them accessible to to the callings and to participate in the BCC, but also internal commissions. You know, what have been your strategy strategy to make them more engaged and more welcoming? Because one of the key area for this particular form is how people are more engaged and more heard and more welcome in the commission or BCCs. So I'm just wondering, like, one deliverables from, as a chair in the TC, if there has been any?
Okay, you may have missed a couple of the deliverables that I said. One of the things that we wanted was to have, excuse me, more training on racial equity. And we had that, six sessions from February to April. A member indicated that she was having issues with regard to accessibility of materials. And staff has a draft of a Materials Accessibility Guide that is almost completed. So that's a deliverable. We had a discussion about group agreements for consideration. I didn't mention that earlier, but that's something that Christie Kumar was working with us on, and that's a follow-up item that we have. I think that we've we've had several discussions over the years where we we take time and we talk about, you know, are there ways that we can make our meetings better? That was, we had that, I think that last one was maybe about eighteen months ago. But the meeting, the discussion that we had this last time and that we had in 2021 talked mostly about how to make our meetings more accessible to others. And, you know, we seem to have a pretty good group and and people, you know, my focus is always to make sure that everybody can participate the way that they would. And I guess I wasn't, you know, I I'm happy to spend time with you offline talking about what I believe we've accomplished. We have a, as you may know from recall from being on the Transportation Commission, we developed a member handbook that explains to new people to the Transportation Commission or anybody thinking about it, what it's all about. There's training that you need to take during the six, for six months to familiarize you with the various city policies and ordinances. We have a Transportation Commission website, which has links to the various training. We developed a Transportation Commission work plan that lets people know what we're doing on the TC. So we've developed, those are all deliverables that we've worked on and developed in the four years of the TC, so that everybody knows what we're all about and what we're working on. And we talk about them all the time and and make changes as needed. So anyway, I'm proud of what we've done at TC. And Alder Foster, you've been along with a lot of the ride on TC, and many others have as well. So, you know, I'm happy to answer any other questions with regard to TC that you may have.
Thank you. Thank Anne. President, I want to ask a question for Patrick.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Patrick, thank you so much for coming. And, you know, can you talk about, you know, the consistency of this form and how it helped the Water Utility to be, the board, to be more engaged and more accountable?
I think that by having the form, we're able, at every meeting, we rotate who the person is on the committee that does the evaluation. Usually, it's orally reading through the items. And the person facilitating at that point may declare that the particular item was met or not met. And if folks have discussions about it, that can occur. I can also envision that this could be something which could be introduced by the chair at the beginning of a meeting as a reminder how the working agreements or expectations that exist for committee members. The particular items include one in which there's an expectation that people will review materials prior to coming to the meeting and be prepared to engage in discussion. So I think that it facilitates a good working situation for committee members as well.
Thank you, Pat. And have you had any conflict? Some of the challenges or some of the lack of support for this particular ordinance is it might be taking a lot of time for the staff. So can you talk about if there is, if there has been any disagreement within the board? Or has there been more time put into this effort to do this evaluation?
I I think that over the last three or four years since we've been using the form, I think it has widespread support. I really can't think of any instance in which people objected to the use. It also does not take very much time to go through the items, which traditionally are done at the end of, end of the meeting. So it's it's work for the Water Utility Board. We have a diverse group of of members. And that's why I'm speaking tonight to support it.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. Alder, Alder Conklin, go ahead.
Thank you, President Furman. My question is actually for Patrick as well. Now, I know you said that you just started using this form in 2019. So were you guys virtual during the pandemic? Was everybody at home filling out these surveys?
Yes, we were virtual during the pandemic. And at the end of the meeting, I should back up a bit. For each agenda that's sent out the meeting, some member of the committee is designated as the facilitator or the meeting evaluation form. So that person then, at the end of the meeting, will lead the discussion of it.
Okay, so you you guys just did the one person, the one person, and then just discussed it at the end of the meeting? That was the, I don't know how you call it, the group that you guys went with? For us, we have three diff, I'm sorry, you might not understand the question. So where there's just a member observer, and then you guys talk about it at the end of the meeting? That's the one that you guys are doing, one person's chosen?
Yes. Now, in the history of doing this, at times, a physical copy of the item has been handed out to individual members. Individual members were asked to fill out the form, then turned into the chair, which would be feedback in that manner as well.
So, Patrick, my question is, are you using the same exact evaluation form that we have seen or that we have in front of us? Is this your form that you're using with the one through five?
I don't have a copy of what you're viewing, but I think it is the same form, same items. Maybe Alder Whirly could clarify that for me.
Yes, I think we just edited the form, basically based on the Water Utility specifications we removed, and we put it as a general form. But the content of it is mainly the same.
Okay, thank you. So I got two two questions. I'm going to wrap it up. So is the person evaluating the chair person? Or are they evaluating the whole, all the members of how this group is ran?
They're evaluating all the members.
All the members, including the chair?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you. And then my last question is, what, in the three years that you've been using it, can you tell me any, what are the quantitative measures of the success of, from this data that you collected? Can you tell me, like, what's the success? How are you measuring that?
Well, I think the relative ease and facilitation of the meetings, the the lack of any observed overt violation of some of the things that that were listed there, such as interrupting of speakers, interrupting people in a manner that doesn't honor their voice in the process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
I have a question for Anne.
Anne, Anne, I believe is still with us, so you can go ahead, Alder.
She's muted, so I'm not sure. Anne, so to clarify, you are in the Transportation Committee?
Yes.
And the meeting you referenced was on, the one from last week, June twenty-second?
Right, it was the one we emailed back and forth about with regard to equity inclusion relative to the SSM project form.
Okay, so I think, I mean, I I believe that's the meeting I watched on Sunday. I mean, I'm not in the Transportation Committee, but I watch those meetings regularly. And I was there for the, if I'm not mistaken, the one about the crossing guards. And that item that you're referring to was right after it.
Yes, correct.
Perfect, yeah. So that's, that's, I just wanted to verify that. In that meeting, yeah, I just wanted to verify that, and I will, I will dig into into content, into discussion and reference some points that were discussed there that I think are appropriate. Thank you, Anne.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wehili, go ahead.
Thank you. Can I ask a question for Krishna?
We can do that during staff discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Our staff question, that is. Any other questions for the registrants? Okay, not seeing anything. Thank you, Anne and Patrick. And we're going to go to questions for staff, Alder Figaro Cole. I assume your hand's up from before. Yes, Alder Wehili, go ahead.
Thank you. Krishna, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Uh, Krishna, uh, thank you for joining us. I, I'm wondering, as the manager for the water utility, someone who's new and someone who's new to the board. Uh, can you walk us through how what has been your experience in term of this evaluation form, but also your experience with the board?
Thank you, Alder Wihili, and good afternoon, President Furman and Alders. I will try to answer that question. So I've been with the water utility for about twelve months. Before I get into the details, I wanted to share one mechanical aspect of this whole process that I've seen. One is, it's fairly quick and the seven board members that we have, they rotate. So it could be, uh, A, on one meeting, making the evaluation. So that person would go through these questions and that person would kind of determine how the, each of the parameters, um, you know, were conducted that day. So it's not anybody filling the forms, no one is collecting the data. It's just used as a checklist eh, for each assigned board member. I think we do it alphabetically. So that, uh, person would go through the questions and quickly assign based on his, her, or their judgment about the proceedings of that day. And that's the end of it. Uh, otherwise, nothing, I have not seen anything else at all. So we don't collect, uh, data. Each of the individual members don't fill up the form. If I'm, uh, hopefully I'm accurately reporting this, uh, Alder Wihili. That's exactly the mechanics of that process is. And from my perspective, this is actually a board self-evaluation form, so I will be limited in my comments because this, this is an exercise conducted by the governing board. Staff merely facilitates in terms of putting this as an agenda item and the forms are readily available. Other than that, we do nothing. We don't collect the forms or accumulate the data. And from my perspective, what I've seen is this is merely a quick and a gentle reminder about the civil discourse that Vice President Delmore mentioned. It's just that a courtesy quick check on each of these parameters. And, uh, for some strange reason, we had all, if I remember correctly, all twelve months, most of the answers were fully met sort of thing. So we didn't have any other contentious kind of a notion. But even as a staff member, it's a general reminder for me, these are the aspects that we need to keep in mind while conducting public's business. So that's the value of it. It's just a very general quick under five minutes is what I want to say this process works.
Thank you, Krishna.
Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
Um, means for, um, staff also?
Uh, who in particular?
Kumi Kumar. Um, hi. Um, hi, how, um, how long are your meetings on a average?
About an hour and a half on an average.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, uh, for staff? Okay, not seeing any, any discussion on this item. Alder Conklin, go ahead. Alder, sorry, you're muted.
After two years, you'd think somebody would have this under control. Okay, let me begin again. Um, I, I think what I was gonna ask is if this, is this an appropriate time? Can I make a motion to play this on file? Um, I mean, just, I think this was rushed. I think this needs to be looked in more. To me, honestly, like, a number evaluation can be deceived.
Hold on, Alder. 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 Hang on one second. So um, as per, as per Robert's rules, there is no inappropriate time to make a motion. If you're going to make a motion, you do need to have a second. Um, I do think I want to stick to having discussion, if, if that's okay with you, and then you're welcome to make a motion um, later. Um, there are some people lined up. Um, I can't stop you if you want to make a motion and somebody wants to second it. Um, but, but certainly would prefer, hold on one second, Alder Wihili would prefer that we stick to discussion before we, we, we did motions. Um, but totally your call. You can make a decision right now.
No, that's fine. Everybody.
Alder Wihili, would you, I, I assume you want to make a point of order?
Yes, I, I think I, I haven't spoken, spoken to the, uh, I, uh, the agenda item itself, so I haven't, I would like to this, you know, to talk about the item itself and then we can have the discussion. I think that was the, you know, the, the process is talking about the, the objective of the, uh, of the ordinance. I haven't had the opportunity to talk about.
Alder, you can certainly do that now during discussion. This was not a new item. This was an item that was referred and had previous discussion at CCEC. That's why I didn't do discuss, then didn't have you do any sort of presentation before discussion. Um, but when it's your turn, you're more than, more than welcome to talk about it more. Um, Alder Conklin, um, so you do have the floor. If, um, would you like to just talk about it now? Do you want to put a motion on the floor? You're, you're, certainly your call.
Uh huh. Uh, no, I want everyone to speak on this. Uh.
Okay, so go, so go ahead and continue then. Yep, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so for me, really, this, I just feel like this was very rushed. Um, I feel like this is micromanaging almost and I feel like this would be the best use of our time. I think we can really put our time towards more in face-to-face conversations instead of filling out a piece of paper that can be very deceptive and be perceived in many different ways. Uh, you know, one through five is, you know, your good is something different than my good. So I think that this is a bad move to make and I hope that my colleagues will follow along and, and really see that if we're going to do this, we should do it right. And, um, you know, we shouldn't be micromanaged and have to be picking to me at a meeting when I'm supposed to be paying attention and now I'm supposed to be evaluating. I mean, I think they're kind of two different things, so.
Thank you, Alder Conklin. Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
Thank you, Cher. So, um, I just want to, to bring up, um, an opportunity for all of us to perhaps take the time to watch that Transportation Commission meeting on June twenty second, item number five, which was TC practices of equity and inclusion. Um, it was pretty interesting to watch and to hear, uh, there was a presentation there from Tarek and from Christie Kumar and Christie focused on five, um, five tips or five methods of, of creating um, an environment on the committees that was inclusive and, and and equitable as well as a way on how to create so, having some level rules on how to, to treat each other on the, on the committees. And they, she, they were kind of like, um, pretty much asking the commission to be, to act as a pilot on how, um, how to do that work. Um, I, I mean, I learned a lot from that little, um, little, um, discussion on, on, on that item, but honestly, those are the things that I'm looking for. I'm looking for to see how we can learn and how we can learn more on how to leave to leave the methodology of the RESG tool instead of always being asking about what's the RESG tool use? Like, I want to be able to, I think the RESG tool purpose is to be, to, to get to a place where we don't really need the RESG tool because we already have been looking at things from that lens. So what they are trying to accomplish on the, um, Transportation Commission with that little pilot is something that should be examined and should be, um, and should be replicated across, across the board. So I encourage you all to, to take a, a look at that. Um, and consider the possibilities. I agree, this form is, um, I don't like the micromanagement part of it. I don't, I don't under, I don't want to undermine the benefits of the, or, or the benefits that all the people find on it. So it should be something that we can recommend for people to use, but it shouldn't be an ordinance. It shouldn't be a mandate for people to do it. So if a committee wants to do it, the committee has the time to do it. If a, the, if the Transportation Committee, for example, after being there for six hours listening about sidewalks, they don't want to spend five more minutes there, they shouldn't have to. I mean, I think there's a, there's a place for the form in, in committees where the form is welcome and, you know, they, the committee itself decides that, that they want it. So that, that's my take on it. Thank you.
Thank you. They're going to be on the spot for a moment. Either you or if you can't do it, can you ask Karen to send an actual link with the time of that discussion um, that you brought up, um, Alder Figaro Cole? Um, if you wouldn't mind either working with Karen or, or just sending out a link and just telling Alders, hey, this was that time because that does seem like that's something useful just, and that you brought up, that's worth sharing. So, um, that's me putting you on the spot.
I'll send it to Karen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alder Wihili, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, uh, President. Uh, so two things came up of this. Uh, the work group, President Work Group on racial justice, equity, anti-racism comprised of seven, uh, Alders, Alder McKinney, Alder Harrington, Alder McKinney, uh, Miyatsi, uh, Carter, Benford, and myself, and Nikki Conklin were, uh, charged with streamlining the process of the BCC. The work group discussed the current board, commission, and committee members recruitment, appointment, training, approach. And we invited various speakers, including the mayor, uh, um, Satya Rood Kanway. We invited the performance excellence specialist Kara Kratowicz. We invited Tarek and, uh, Christie Kumar from the, um, uh, the Civil Rights Department as well as the Norman Davis. Some of the, and also, uh, the, um, director of, um, affirmative action, uh, Melissa Gumper, Gumber. So one of the things that came up of all those are, number one, the mayor, you know, we always challenge her and in term of recruitment and, uh, to her credit, one of the things she said in our presentation, and I sent the presentation, uh, the uh, CCEC meeting in April nineteen, I'm sure Karen sent you. The mayor alluded to the challenge we have is not the recruitment, it's the retention. How we make our BCC particularly people of color who are coming to our city have the space of welcoming and more inclusive. Uh, the, uh, Kara talked about the sense of the why, why someone will be joining in the, uh, the BCC. And then, uh, Norman Davis talked about the culture. You know, we have seen people alluded to that they're saying that they have been a chair for thirty years, twenty years. But then we are having lack of, uh, you know, uh, retention a lot of the time because of, they don't have that space of welcoming, uh, being heard, being engaged, and so forth. So the focus, you know, based on the, what we recommended, you know, I was really inspired by the, um, Water Utility Board and as, uh, Patrick and Krishna alluded to, this is just like a civil discourse, just trying to connect with yourself to have your own self-evaluation why you are here as an older, as a committee, as a board, or as a commission. What's the purpose for you to serve on this particular BCC? And that gives you the alignment of your service for the City of Madison. So after, you know, so many discussions with the, uh, with these various speakers, it, uh, this evaluation form helps to connect why and how we can become a better ser- uh, servant and servant leader. Uh, making sure the BCC has able to know and know what's the mission and create standard of behavior in meeting to encourage equitable and respectable engagement among members. Uh, again, all this is just mainly, um, to see how we can be able to be more, uh, um, uh, civil within ourselves and become servant leaders. Uh, there has been, you know, uh, the, the form, we, uh, tweeted based on the committee. Uh, we, you know, some of it, it was more, uh, direct to water utility. But one of the things that really resonated with me is how we can ask ourselves at the end and the beginning of the meeting is who is on the table and who is not on the table? Whose voices are not heard and whose voices are heard? And who is in, on the table? So I think this is not just micromanaging anyone or giving more work to the staff, but it's just a sense of time that people are listening to why they are serving and becoming a servant leader. But on the same time, how they can be able to evaluate this themselves in term of if they can engage with the communities of color. So with that, I hope, you know, you will support this, uh, ordinance. We are open to, uh, making some changes if there are, are ways that we can make it more, uh, uh, more, um, adaptable rather than more, uh, you know, punitive. So I'm open to that. But I think this is a, a place that we can be able to start. So I hope you'll support this.
Thank you, Alder Wihili. Uh, Vice President Curry.
Thank you, President Furman. Um, I am not in support of, of approving the resolution as it is. Couple of reasons, um, we all through CCEC went through, um, interviews to fill the three vacancies that we had and realized through that process and even improved it, um, that oh, I for, I forget which it is, but subjective and objective and you don't want to be objective, I believe. I see. Yes. Okay. No, you don't want to be subjective. There we go. Um, and, you know, I, I think it was brought up by Alder Conklin. Um, you have a, a body of members who are going to have different perspectives about that. And while I appreciate that the tool was developed and that it's working for the Water Utility Board, I also want to commend the Transportation Commission for doing work on its own without directives that is tied into the city's mission and initiatives um, in terms of equity and inclusion. And so, um, I'm not supporting because we have a wide array of those meetings. I think another one of my peers asked how long the Water Utility Board meetings are, for instance. An hour and a half pales in comparison to some of our other BCC meetings. Um, and so taking that into account as well as we have controversial topics and items and things that, um, folks register for that still have to go to the council. Um, I don't think it's the best use of all BCC's times, but definitely providing and looking toward providing resources for our residents that do step up and do this work of their own time and volunteering, um, of how, you know, setting a, a, a guideline of what we expect of chairs and, and vice chairs or how to conduct city business and meetings, but also provide some of those resources. And as others alluded to tonight, having those conversations when there are issues not, um, noticed within a chair or a leader of, um, some BCC. So, um, I do appreciate the effort. I just don't think this is a one-size-fits-all approach, um, which I feel that this resolution offers. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Curry. Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead. It looks like.
I didn't realize my hand was up.
No, no problem. Alder Bennett. I apologize for not announcing your entrance earlier. Um, but go ahead.
No worries. I am here. I am present. So please mark me as present. Thank you. Um, I honestly, I don't want to say I disagree with my colleagues, but I just want to recognize the intention behind this and I think that it is a valiant intention. Um, I really don't, um, on its face, the intention, I don't see a problem with having a mechanism, providing a mechanism for self-evaluation. Um, however, I, I can also understand my, um, colleagues on CCEC with this idea of like micromanaging B, BCCs and like how it's not a one fits up, one, one-size-fits-all approach. Um, as for the self-evaluation form itself, um, personally, I, I think that filling out a form after every single meeting is excessive. Um, I mean, I don't know. I mean, my colleague on here, Patrick, sits on the next commission and I couldn't imagine leaving those meetings and last thing I want to do after leaving some of the BCCs is filling out a form. Um, I'm just thinking about doing my homework and going to bed. Um, so I, I think, you know, if, uh, you know, Alder Wihili, if you want to ask, like, do some amendments, like maybe it doesn't have to be all the time or maybe give some of the BCC's leeway to decide, um, how often or when or what types of questions they want to ask so that it kind of puts it into their hands about how they'd like to evaluate themselves because I, I do think it's valuable for some committees. Um, to be able to ta- take in feedback from committee members and see how they can operate better. And I am just saying that from learning from, for example, um, I remember it was a year ago or two years ago, Nada Elma Koshy um, abruptly left the Sustainable Madison Committee after having a bad experience with racism. And I just think, what if there was a mechanism for, um, her or any other committee member to um, share feedback and such? for um her or any other committee member to um share feedback and such? So I I want to say, like, I understand the intention. I think as it stands, it's a bit um excessive, but I think that there is a way to make this that that gives um BCCs leeway to choose how they'd like to evaluate themselves.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Uh Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you, President Furman. Um, yeah, I I mean, I agree with a lot of what I've I've heard tonight. Um, I I I don't support um the legislation that's in front of us, but I also do think it's really worth um talking about the what I what I am understanding is the intent. And I think there really is an opportunity um to have some more standardized ways of uh, you know, keeping this conversation in the fore. I think it is easy for it to sort of disappear or or not not be present. And so I'm really supportive of um of that of that goal. Um, I think in the in the final report, um, you know, what I saw related to BCCs there was um really focused on education and training plan for for BCC. And um I know that's something I've been really interested in as well with that was, you know, the TFOGS recommendations basically, you know, were around that as well. Um, I I, to me, I think there is a place to make improvements, but it's, I would imagine doing it through that, doing it through the, and you know, right now, the council office is very, very short-staffed. Theoretically, the the Chief of Staff is the um BCC admin lead. So there's a whole bunch of kind of work around training and standardization, um, the training and education and standardization around our BCCs, including trainings for chairs, for members. So there's a whole, like, bolus of work there that I think is really critical. Um, I think we also included um the um Director of Resident Engagement position that is also, you know, be- being recruited for, I think would have a key role in supporting that work as well. So I I'm really supportive of of continuing those conversations and thinking about, you know, tools we can offer, uh maybe even expectations to set around BCCs. But I don't, I don't think we need to do it through ordinance. And I and I don't think we should try and come up with one form that'll work for every uh every committee. But um definitely would like support um kind of the goals under- underneath that. And um while I won't support the legislation tonight, I'm I'd be happy to support and work on um getting getting some more support and encouragement and framing for our BCCs to uh to be due in reflection, because I think that is really critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Bennett, go ahead.
For the second time, um, I just want to offer really quickly, like, two things, I think, that could change, changes that would might, that would, that could make this better. One, it doesn't need to be every meeting. Maybe just a quarterly check-in or something like that. And two, it shouldn't fall on council staff. Instead, it should fall on, or instead, it should be a collaboration with whoever's the chair of the committee and the whatever staff member is assigned to that committee. Um, because that seems a lot more feasible than putting all the work on our our chief of staff or a lot of the work on our chief of staff. I mean, I ju- I just think that there's a better way to go about this. So I'm down to talk more about how we can make it better, but yeah.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. Alder Paulson, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so a a couple of things. Um, 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 I'm sort of speaking from just past experience as as a chair. Um, I actually am kind of interested in 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 having a form. I think it'd be interesting, I think I would have liked to have had this uh at uh at our committee uh back in the day that was still kind of early. RESG was just a super new thing. Um, the 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 value statement was not automatically applied to the top of every single um uh agenda. So it was a a little bit of a different world. But I actually think it would be really nice to 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 fill out that form at the end of every meeting, uh simply as another reminder. It's a mechanical thing you got to go through and you got to circle uh the things. You got to consider should these seven items. I'm maybe not a fan of the numbers. I actually think I'd rather see it like, you know, instead of one through five, it's more like, yes, we did really well, uh or yes, we got this. Hmm, you know, we we could do better. No, we did really badly uh in this meeting, just as a as a thing. I guess um I'm a little more leery about uh having a discussion at the end of every meeting. I think that's the real kind of time killer here and the sort of what would make me the most nervous about about this, that there's that there's a evaluation uh meeting reflection. Um, I know this is becoming a thing in the corporate world. Um, more and more, you see people and even in in my company, I'm starting to hear grumbles about uh the every meeting, the end of every meeting, we're going to make sure that there's uh uh a an evaluation thing. Uh, we'll see how that goes. Um, uh, but but I think, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask everyone to fill out a form at the end of a meeting. I think it could be a a useful uh addition. Uh, I'm not sure that quite gets enough to the intent of 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 what's going on uh being proposed here, but I I think that would be, from my experience as a committee chair, I would welcome that that uh form and just as a kind of mental check-in for individual um committee members to to think about things. Um, what happens to the form afterwards is sort of uh I think an open question. The chair just kind of collects them and takes a look at them and and summarizes later. Um, I'm not a fan of the member observer um going through in in uh at the end of it. Um, uh, having one person assigned to sort of uh evaluate that and report back to the entire committee. I think that's a a little bit too weird. But the other two options I could be uh down with. So so I think there's a lot good here uh and and I hope we find a way to move some of this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Paulson. Alder Conklin.
Uh, thank you, President Furman. I just want to state to the, I'm not against this. I I think something would be useful, but just as it is now in front of us, I just don't agree with that. And I think um now I would like to make my motion to place this on file, please.
Um, with or without prejudice?
I think it needs prejudice because it can't just come back how it is right now. We need to vet this process more, look into this more collaboration. So it, because as as my understanding um with prejudice would be able to bring it right back as it is. And no, excuse me, without prejudice would be able to bring it back as it is without changing anything. But with prejudice means it has, some things have to change and get looked in. Uh, uh, if I'm correct on that.
I'm going to actually ask um Attorney Haas um to to make sure everybody is clear on with or without prejudice, so there's no no confusion.
Sure. Uh, the ordinance states if it's placed on file um without prejudice, then the item can come back without waiting for sixty days. And and if it's just placed on file, uh, um, and you don't say without prejudice, then there's a sixty-day waiting period before that that proposal or a similar proposal could come back. So if the intent is, a- and it's not, it's not only this specific proposal, it's a proposal that would, you know, be similar to this. So if the intent is to uh prevent a similar proposal from being considered by the council for the next sixty days, it would just be placed on file. If the intent is to allow the proposal or revision of the proposal to come back even within sixty days, it should be placed on file without prejudice.
Okay, so it has nothing to do about the language or anything within the ordinance? It's only the time period of sixty days?
Well, well, it it it's not only the language. Um, I can look up the exact terminology in the ordinance, but it's something to the effect of a similar proposal or substantially similar proposal cannot be back, brought back within sixty days. So if if you wa- if you want to allow some tweaks to it uh to be considered by the council within sixty days, then you would place it on file without prejudice.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Haas.
Alder Conklin, you still have the floor. Would you, what would you like your motion to be?
Um, well, I'll do without prejudice because I know the other one was without prejudice as well, too. So I'll keep it the same. So I'm place on file with without prejudice.
Is there a second? Alder Bennett, is your hand up for a second or for discussion?
Well, it was up to me, get without prejudice, but now it's up to second.
Okay. Um, and we obviously have discussed this for a while. Um, and the way I set up the rules this evening, now we have a a second discussion because a motion is on the table. Um, does anybody wish to discuss the motion that's on the table?
Um, I can still speak on it if if I have the floor.
Sure, absolutely. Alder Conklin, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, honestly, I just think this needs some more time. I really think that this was rushed, just something was thrown together. I'm not against having something, some sort of evaluation. I don't think we can, I mean, if we're going to self-evaluate, I I really look at that as looking at myself. But if we're going to evaluate the BCCs, I think just this, this, how it is in front of us needs to be vetted more. There needs to be more collaboration. And so I think that would be best to just hold off and not rush this and let's really dig deep into this and get this correct. If we're going to do something right, like, you know, if we're going to do something, let's do it right. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Alder Conklin. Alder Heck.
Thank you. I'm going to support this motion, um although I honestly don't believe that what needs to be fixed will be fixed within sixty days because I really think what we need to do is not only not mandate something for BCCs. Certainly, we should provide tools, but I really think it's clear that the Transportation Commission's approach or or subversions thereof is really what we need to be working towards. And, you know, as as others said, Alder Wihili is uh reasoning for doing this is stupendous and we need to pursue that. But I I just don't think this is going to work, but I will support the motion.
Thank you, Alder Heck. Any other discussion? Any objection to me for recording unanimous consent? Okay, um seeing none, um, uh, we will record that as um unanimous consent on that motion. Um, our next item is um Agenda Item Five, Seven Zero Six Four Two, Substitute Establishing a Common Council Prohibited Harassment and/or Discrimination Policy. Um, we do not have anybody registered for comment, or at least we didn't a moment ago. I assume that didn't change. Um, but if it did, I will interrupt uh uh questions for staff. We'll start with, I will note that this was discussed at the C C E C meeting. Alder Wihili, I know I asked for that recording to be sent, so there was an introduction there and there are there are questions there. Um, but I will start with um uh if anybody has questions for staff on this item. Okay, um, I do um want to give, um, I think I want to give Karen an opportunity um to um talk a little about, uh possibly set up some of the questions that were asked at the last uh point. Um, Karen, are you ready or do you want to, do you want to uh talk about that? Or do we want to get into discussion on where it is and and other other people may want to talk about um uh paths forward based on some of the questions and and some of the work that maybe has been done since? Sounds like Karen would prefer that. Um, so now I'm going to open the floor to discussion on this item. Vice President Curry, please go ahead.
Thank you, President Furman. Um, so, nevermind, I'm not going to say that. Um, this is a area that has interested me um in terms of, my brain is not working, sorry. Um, in terms of of, I feel like the conversation we've already been having so far this evening, um, but focusing on ourselves as elected officials in a body. Um, what what does it mean? You know, there were nine of us who were sworn in new and only know this work um virtually. And so um identifying some of the issues that have come up when we've been on the council floor um and trying to find resources and tools to complement um is a goal of mine personally. I think the Code of Conduct as it stands is similar to our our last um two items that we were discussing as well of um, to me, prescribing a set, set of standards and guidelines towards twenty diverse individuals, but to me doesn't seem to have resources of how to deal with not getting to a point. Um, I appreciate the guidance and and thought of um, we need to have something and uh looking towards like the A P M, knowing that city employees adhere to that, but not Alders. Um, so a a path forward, I was thinking, is in taking some time to incorporate some tools and resources that have um been made available to us. I think also based on prior conversations that Alder Wihili and um Alder Bass had had when Alder Bass was um in the council president's seat. And so um I have a lot of interest of working to combine the resources with the guidelines and hope that we have to use the Code of Conduct very few and sparingly. Um, in terms of some of the work that's been, uh, myself and President Furman have been in leadership is, uh, there was a meeting that we had with the city's E A P or Employee Assistance Program staff. Um, they compiled kind of a proposal of, based on the conversation that they had with myself, President Furman. Um, Karen, our chief staff was also there, uh the good doctor. Um, and uh prior to myself and President Furman being in council leadership, um Alder Bass had had a conversation with staff at Y W C A within their restorative justice program. So work has continued, even though we know that the actual resolution containing the current, as it stands, discrimination and harassment um policy. It sounds like through conversations and some of those um proposals and hearing information from different sources, um, a code of conduct is more kind of appropriate or what we're looking for. Um, I don't know if that's, I feel like I'm rambling now. I don't know, I didn't, I don't have a presentation like President Furman put together for the what is hybrid. Um, but I would be interested in in possibly, I guess, one of the fears that I have is we have a very heavy agenda and a lot of items to get through C C E C this year. Um, we are in July on Friday, I can't believe it. And um I want to make sure that we have intentional time and space to talk through some of these more complex effects, more than just us. Um, policies such as uh the Code of Conduct, discrimination and harassment, as well as um some of the other guidelines for BCCs. And um think that this, being intentional and putting all uh resources towards the table and also getting perspectives outside of just ourselves in the body, um, forming a a subcommittee to talk just about this um topic and be able to bring it back to C C E C and ideally in front of the council with a a finished, polished product. So sorry for my ramble. I don't know if that helps, Karen. Please bridge the gap if I forgot anything. Or if you want me to elaborate more on other resources, that would probably be helpful.
Um, yeah, let me just say real quick that, yeah, we're collecting information like like Vice President Curry said about from a nu- a number of different venues in terms of both ongoing trainings for Alders and also for uh conflict mediation services. Uh, uh, in addition to ongoing conversations about the Code of Conduct and um way, you know, ways to um move that forward. So I I guess I don't have, you did, you did a great job summarizing it all, so.
Thank you both. Um, uh, Alder Wihili, go ahead.
Thank you, President Furman. So the Administrative Procedure Memorandum A P A P M Three-Dash-Five, Policy Prohibits Employees From Harassment and Discrimination. The common council desires to do similar standard to the action of members of the council. So that's the reason why we have uh higher standard and higher expectation for all members of the common councils to treat its uh their colleagues, city employees and members of the public in a more welcoming, fair, respectful and equitable manner. The reason for this policy, you can dice it and change it however you want, it's 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 a code of conduct. You know, if we are putting A P M Three-Dash-Five for our staff, then we have to have then we have to have similar to the highest standard as of ethics for our common council members as elected official. The council should remain the highest, uh, personal integrity, civility, fairness, and in carrying out their public duties to Madison residents. City of Madison elected officials should share commitment to ethical conduct and services to its residents. The policy is created to ensure that all elected officials have clear guidelines for carrying out their responsibilities and their relationship with each other, with the city staff, with the residents of Madison and with other private and governmental entities. By this adoption of this policy, it's hoped that expectation of the members are individually and the Madison common council as a whole will aspire to the highest standard. In the event there's something that's not agreeable, members of the individual common council will see and hold each other accountable. And we are holding our staff, you know, and more accountable. So I don't understand why we shouldn't be. Uh, this AP, you know, the code of conduct, some say that it's anti harassment is too punitive and too harsh. Uh, we don't need some, you know, um, some kind of strict guidelines. And, you know, one of the things that I always see and really inspire me to come to the United States is the the importance and the respect of law. Uh, all of us have some ways of doing things. But at the same time, we are abiding to such certain time and certain, you know, rules. We know when you're driving in the street, you know, you are, you have to abide by the rule in the street. Thirty-five miles an hour, twenty-five miles an hour and so forth. And I found like, you know, when we came to the common council, you know, as older, uh, uh, carried alluded to, we are 20 members with different lived experience, different expectation, different experience and different, uh, background. And all of us are in different ways of doing things. But at the same time, you know, we need to understand that we're here to serve our residents. And without having certain code of conduct, I think, you know, that gives us the free will to do whatever we can or whatever we want to do in mistreating our colleagues or mistreating our staff or mistreating our residency. So, you know, all the time what I'm hearing is this is is good, but it's it's it could be done, tweeted or changed. But at the bottom line is there's no either or. You know, we're here, you know, this is the executive committee, you know, you see what's working. I don't have time to, uh, be part of any other conversation. If you want to change it, go ahead. If you want to just put on file, go ahead. I'm not wasting my time. And this is our responsibility to serve the city of Madison. And this code of conduct needs to be supported so that people understand the expectation, the responsibilities and the contabilities. So I hope you support that. Uh, and any any changes you want, you know, I think can be modified, but I'm, I'll not be part of that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Wihili. Uh, Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, President Furman. Um, so I'm, I'm really appreciative that, uh, this draft was put together and has has pushed us to have this conversation. I think a version of this conversation has been happening since, at least since I started in 2019. Um, particularly around the questions of policies for Alders and acknowledging that APMs isn't the 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 mechanism to set policies. The question of what policy should be there and then specifically this question around a policy around harassment in particular. Uh, and so I'm really, I'm grateful to see, you know, someone putting pen to paper and saying, all right, well, let's create something. Um, I I definitely think, um, there needs to be a lot of work on this, um, before we adopt it. I know at our previous meeting, I think city staff suggested that something that, you know, don't let perfect be the enemy of the goods. Like, you know, don't, don't push it off. Just get something. You can change it later. I think there is a lot of interest. Um, there's a lot of good ideas that I've heard from folks, and I think this is the moment for us to get it in there. Um, and I think we should do what we can to get it in as good as we we can because nobody's going to take it up a couple of months after we pass it and tweak it and et cetera. So we should put the time on the front end to to make it right. I think fundamentally for me, this needs to apply to all elected and appointed officials, not just Alders. Um, that actually was one of the priority recommendations of the, uh, the the final report of the, um, anti racism work group. Um, and so I think this is the opportunity to do that. I mean, the practices are going to be the same, right? Whatever standards we want to agree on at the end should apply to board committee commission members and Alders. There may be differences in how you deal with the consequences. So we'll need to think through those things. I also think that it needs to include the mayor. And when we heard again from staff at our last meeting that this is this, if nothing else, this is really incredibly important symbolically. And we need to, we need to set by example and have that standard for ourselves. I mean, what what more symbolic, important uh, person in the city than the mayor? And we haven't addressed that. And I think a city policy could and should address that. And again, we'll have to look at legal abilities in terms of any consequences, and it may come down to can't do anything. Council can, you know, adopt some resolution shaming or something, but ultimately it's up to the voters, right? I mean, that and that may be the same answer largely for Alders. So those questions can get worked through. But I think it is, I think we've got a good start to what the stand, kind of what what standard should be, what our expectations are. Uh, and I am willing to put work into further developing that. I think the other thing I'll say is I, you know, and I think this this probably just speaks to general political differences, you know, kind of personality differences. So I'm, I'm one who um, I'm pretty skeptical about the rule of law. And I I I think it's often a mistake to look at making a rule and putting it in there as a solution to a problem. And I think that was part of why I didn't support the the last attempt to mandate a self self evaluation form. And maybe it's the teacher in me, but I am really interested in trying to get at that positive change that I think is underlying that desire. And I think the same thing applies here. And so I'm in particular, very interested in how we can provide support to Alders, to BCC members, to the mayor, that we have resources available for conflict mediation. And and that we continue to improve what it means to be an alder because it's a horrible job right now and y'all know that. And it's always going to be tons of conflict and it's going to lead to to hurt feelings. And I'm interested in trying to identify root cause and go in there. And I think a lot of that can happen with some work on this project. That could also include a written document expectations. And when we get there, I think that should be an ordinance. I think we should actually adopt it as ordinance, not some city council policy that we don't really know what that means. Um, so I'll leave it there, but, uh, I I am willing to put some energy into this, and, uh, I think it's an important conversation that we continue. Um, but I I would not support passing this as is tonight.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
Thank you, um, President Furman. Um, so I'm not going to repeat what Alder Foster just said. I am I am navigating toward towards that thinking. I think we do need something in place. Um, but for me, I mean, I don't know how many times I have read this policy and every single time I I find things that that just don't sit well with me. So, um, I see what what we have in front of me as me giving, um, giving the freedom, right authorization of of others' ideas or definitions for the words of the words for words such as respect or civility or or, um, you know, just those those words that we like to use. We 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 each have our own experiences and I and we we very much like may have our own different definitions and and we we put different values on those words. So I'm not ready to just hand over a baton for someone to judge me on what they think respect is. I mean, there are times that it seems like respect, I I've been disrespectful because I don't agree with you and and I that's not my definition of respect. So I I don't, I'm not ready for, um, to pass a policy with with that kind of language in it. And then most importantly for me, the really thing that gives me pause is when this is compared to the policies that the city of Madison has, the city of Madison has a full civil rights division of paid professionals that handles that handles this kind of issue and this kind of, of, um, um, problem resolution. We don't have that. There's 20 of us. Yes, there there's 20 of us and I don't know who in our team is a professional that can say that can manage, um, resolutions on our own. So I feel extremely uncomfortable to to have some sort of pow wow here on the on the CCEC to to, um, to censor another alder in in public or even on the procession. We are, I I'm not an expert on that topic and I'm not comfortable doing that. So I think this this is better served by a committee that that we can identify so social professionals and help us navigate what this is, what what the policies should be saying and who should be taking care of that conflict resolution. And I don't and I strongly believe that uh, at the moment when we pass that whatever policy we pass, it it comes, it comes across with all the resources that it needs to to survive. We cannot just say, oh, yeah, we will hire a mediator later. We'll figure that out later. I I want to see that that's already in place before I sign off on this one. So, um, that's what I am standing. I mean, I would like to see experts on this matter, not us, but third parties try to guide us through this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Figaro Cole. Um, any other discussion? And we're going to go, then I think we'll go ahead and continue my, uh, awkward format of having a motion and then talking about the motion. So does anybody wish to make a motion? Uh, Vice President Curry?
Thank you. Um, let's see. Sounds like there's interest, which is great, but we've also been in the meeting for almost two hours. So I think I would move to refer to not our CCEC meeting, but on July 27th. Yes, July 20th, correct.
Uh, Ald, Vice President Curry, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. Thank you. Um, so I I think definitely more conversation, um, should be had. Folks are probably going to process a little bit today, the conversations, um, as well as, uh, prior conversations. And I would like to take some time to, um, send out an e- or to receive communication from others who would be interested to continue on, um, building onto this code of conduct by including resources um, in conflict mediation, professional development, um, conflict and conflict resolution, I should say. And, um, so I guess could can I ask, I'm part of a motion for that now?
I I think I think that's as part of your discussion is you're just asking people to 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 send you, send you, send you an email, I assume. Um, if if they're, if they have suggestions on that. Um, but I I don't think that needs to be part of the motion. I think just referring it to, uh, that date, that date works. And obviously you gave background on why why you were doing that. Does that help?
Yes. So please send me an email if you are interested, um, in any working. Oh, my God, it's Wednesday and I can't talk. Um, if you would like to be involved in furthering, uh, work to get a code of conduct passed.
Thank you, Vice President Curry. Um, I did, I do want to note, I mean, I think the the creation of what were what was talked about tonight, um, is intended to be inclusive. And so, um, I don't think, uh, Vice President Curry's intent, um, I'm going to speak for her. One, I apologize, is is to have like private discussions with people. I think that the goal, you could certainly start sending things, but I think the goal is to set up a committee that, you know, uh, would have a have a few members and then if any other alder or as well as members of the public staff, et cetera, wanted to attend and participate in those discussions, that would be possible. Um, I think, you know, uh, I share the goal of of this being um, as as open and public as a discussion as possible because I think transparency, um, will will help with legitimacy of this. Um, so, thank you, Vice President Curry. Um, any other discussion on this item? Is there any objection, unanimous consent? Okay, uh, seeing none, um, I'm going to assume unanimous consent and we'll move on to the rest of our agenda. I know it's getting late. Um, I think we could probably cover a bunch of this pretty quickly. Um, Alder Foster, I know you only have a short date for our next item, item, uh, seven two two seven five, um, six on our agenda. Alder Alder Hours Worked, and this is an update on the, um, survey discussions we added our.
Yeah, thank you, President Furman. Um, yeah, real, real briefly, uh, just appreciate the conversation we had last time. Um, I did hear a little bit, um, uh, uh, additional ideas and suggestions from some folks after the meetings. I really appreciate that. Um, and so I feel confident pulling together, uh, with council staff support, a final version of that, um, survey. Um, I some some of that conversation I heard, I think I'm going to just go back only like five years, um, in terms of Alder, kind of keep it more more recent, uh, past Alders. Um, and, um, when we get the results, I'll come back and and share them out. Um, I guess one other kind of general piece of feedback, uh, just to confirm. Um, my intent is to really focus more on just the hours part for this. Um, I shared some information around um, that I'd like to continue having here, but, um, wanted to keep the survey really, um, more focused just around actual Alders' experience of actual hours worked. Um, and so we'll make sure that the language in the surveys really, um, you know, points them to that and and we'll share that information out once we have it.
Uh, thank you, President Furman. Um, I had a couple of suggestions while looking over on over this. Um, so I know it says like, uh, what does it take to do a satisfactory job? Uh, how much does, you know, what is a good job? How much is a very good job? I'm just wondering, like, can there be some sort of explanation or even a scale like, you know, satisfactory job is lowest and then good is in the middle and then very good is high, you know, like, again, because deception, like, to me, I'm a little confused. Is satisfactory just okay or is satisfactory really good, you know? So I I think if we're going to use the language, the language that we're using using should have some type of definition to guide people on a scale, kind of, um, is my suggestion for these survey questions. Otherwise, I mean, I like them. They're getting right to the point and I think this is valuable information that we're going to get. But I think there just needs to be a little bit clearer definitions of satisfactory job, a good job, a very good job.
That's great feedback. Thank you for work to make sure that's much clearer.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, um, item number seven on our agenda, seven two two seven six, council budget. Um, Karen, uh, this will be the first of what I expect to be a few discussions on this, but, um, uh, ask Karen to start tonight, um, um, explaining a little bit, uh, where we are in the the executive operating budget process, um, and then some of her thoughts. So, uh, Karen, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So, yes, um, I'm happy to be starting these conversations now, and I think even beyond the agency budget submission time, I think we have plenty to talk about. Um, and I guess the short, short of some of this, so our agency budget submissions for operating budget for 2023 needs to be turned in on the 21st of July. So, uh, to that end, I have some thoughts about what I would like to put in beyond the cost to continue budget for staff, um, as well as some of the things that you all, in terms of training and conflict mediation. And then I have received a a proposal and Alder Bennett is here. I'm not sure if she'll want to speak on it or not, but um, we have been working on a proposal. She isn't, um, for a an older intern matching program as well. So I have that down. Um, I I want to share, if I can share my screen, it's not an exciting, uh, document, but it does give you a little bit of a sense of what I am, uh, what I'm thinking about here and what I would like to do for the the budget. So.
You should have access to share your screen. Go ahead.
Here we go. Okay. So, um, I'll just go over it real, real briefly, and then if folks want to ask me questions about why or if I'm missing something for the office, let me know. If you have or if I'm missing something for the office, let me know. If you have something else, um, that you'd like to see addressed in the budget ASAP, let me know. Um, so we don't currently have a dedicated amount for staff professional development in our budget. And because I'm hiring, you know, we're hiring three new people and it's an expectation, I, I believe of folks in the workplace these days that there is some support for their professional development. I'm really interested in, in trying to support the new folks as best we can to encourage them to stay with us as long as, as we, as they can. Uh, so I'm proposing for that item to move four thousand from the ten thousand that was, um, put aside for aspire interns and, uh, I'll then bump it by a thousand so that we have five thousand for professional development. Um, and then, uh, I'd also like to increase the professional association membership line. Um, there are a number, I, I have some associations that I'm part of and the policy analyst and the community engagement specialist in particular. Those are sort of specialist positions that would really benefit from some networks. Um, I've seen in other, uh, departments, I've seen the effect of some of those networks, effectiveness. And I've also used my associations networks as well. So I'd like to offer some, um, some availability for that as well. And then, um, I know, a note here that we will still have enough money to have one aspire intern unless they change the amount, uh, drastically, this, this, this should be just fine for an aspire intern next summer. And then I wanted to put in, you know, apropos of the conversation that everyone's been having about, uh, ongoing professional development or training for alders and conflict mediation opportunities. I expect that we'll be developing those opportunities as VB Curry mentioned. Um, we'll be developing those opportunities, you know, in, in the coming months. And I would like to make sure that we have something in the budget that allows us to provide the resources to those opportunities. Um, and then I had mentioned the alder intern program that, um, right now our two aspire interns who are on the, on the, um, observing us tonight, uh, are helping to, uh, create a, what I kind of call like a skeleton framework for a, um, tools and resources for alders to be matched with UW students for, for internships. And we should have something, um, to present in the coming weeks. And one of the, the, the things that was discussed in that case was to have, um, some money set aside for stipends for those interns. So they would be, they wouldn't be like the aspire interns, they would be unpaid interns and it would be kind of an independently coordinated, but we would provide some tools and, and resources. And then, um, a stipend, kind of like, you know, an, an, a nominal amount to kind of support the, the internship. And I'll leave it to Alder Bennett to, um, discuss the nuances. So I'm proposing five thousand for that. Um, these are what I've got so far. Happy to take questions, ideas, et cetera.
Thank you, Karen. Um, Alder Bennett?
Thank you, Karen. Yeah, so I just wanna, I guess, that's my turn to bounce off of that internship program. Uh, this is very introductory and I'm sure we might, I mean, we will have more discussion about it later. But, um, this is something I would love to bring to council. Um, it's an internship opportunity for, um, young people to learn from alders, to get to learn from us, work on specific projects, um, and we get help too. Because I know myself, I cannot, I literally cannot do everything I can by myself. Um, and actually, um, starting, let me turn my camera on. Okay, starting this summer, I have had an intern. And if you know, you know, if you don't, you don't. If you know what he's doing, you don't, you know, you know. If you don't, you don't. But, um, I think it's been really helpful. It has been really helpful for me and I know that he's been getting a lot from it too. Um, he's shadowed me in meetings with, um, staff. Um, shadowed me, for example, I was at a guest speaker event for the US Department of State and that was a really cool opportunity that I know, um, other young people won't have, wouldn't have without it. And I think it's something where if I put my shoes, myself in the shoes where I was a year ago or even two years ago, this is an excellent opportunity for growth. Um, Karen, myself, um, the alder interns and, um, someone from UW, the, um, School of Public, um, Public Affairs, Marie Coco, who was my advisor in the Public Holidays School. Um, we've been working with them on like kind of creating this internship program. And from those conversations came about the issue of pay. Um, I would love to pay our interns and I'm sure that's something other people can get on board with. Um, I understand if we cannot, where, you know, they would be gaining something out of it, possibly an internship, getting internship credits, which when you apply for those three credits that, for an internship credits that are not free, you actually have to pay to get the credit. So you're paying to have an internship to get credit for it. So, um, this really just provides an opportunity, um, to pay interns, um, break, bridge that equity gap in paying interns, um, and give an opportunity. So, um, I'm happy to answer questions about it if you want to learn more. Um, but yeah, thanks. That's a bit what we have.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. I think, um, you know, just to, just to let people know, I mean, we are gonna have more discussions about budget and decide what's gonna be, um, uh, in the proposal, I would ask, and I'll work with Alder Bennett on a little bit more detail on what the money would go towards and how that all works. I'm interested in how much the credits cost and how the program would be set up. Um, but, but I say that, um, not to point out Alder Bennett's proposal, but just to let people know that if you also have ideas, um, just, you know, there'll be more opportunity to talk about that in the future and we definitely should have, uh, more details on, uh, to be able to discuss here on, on, you know, what that looks like. So. Um, thank you, Alder Bennett. I appreciate that. Uh, Alder Conklin, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, President Furman. So this question would be for Dr. Karen. Um, I'm wondering, so like, you know, five thousand for the professional development, uh, seven fifty for membership fees. Right, thank you. Okay. So like with those things, those two things at the top, are those just for the staff? Okay, just. So are they gonna have like a staff account, like how we have a, um, alder account and just take from there to do that? Is that where that money's going? This money that you're projecting?
So that's a great question. And actually, it's quite interesting because the way that the, not everyone may know that the way that the alder accounts are set up is in fact that you have currently seven hundred and twenty-five dollars in the conferences and training line. And you have a, uh, one thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars in the office supplies line. Um, so the conferences and training line, there are different sub, I don't want to get in the weeds too much, but just so you know, there are different subcategories within there and each district has its own like little string of numbers. And the office generally has a string. So it would go in that string of that line within that, that section. Um, and then I would also use, I'll probably end up using about a hundred dollars of that for, there's a few books that I want to, um, provide to staff. I want to do a, um, build in some professional development to staff meetings as well. So that we're also doing a lot of work on our own. And I should also add that I am gonna be, um, building the city trainings into the onboarding plans for all of the new staff as well. So I'm really trying to provide them with a really well-rounded experience. Um, and I think it's better for all of us as well because I, I really want our culture in the department to be something where people are enjoying themselves and they want to come and stay and, you know, our, our, um, you know, it's a fascinating, engaging place to work and I want, I want to do what I can to, to bring that to life.
Okay, so then with the alder training and conflict mediation, the twenty-five thousand, is that split up between all twenty of us?
That is a really good question. I think that what I was envisioning, and of course this depends on how, as it takes shape. What I was envisioning is not so much, uh, alder by, or district by district, but rather a pot of money that we can draw for contracts, for example, for different types of training. Um, and that maybe we could put some money on retainer if we find a, um, conflict resolution, uh, provider or mediation provider, um, that you all are comfortable with. Maybe, you know, I was thinking maybe then we put some money on retainer for that so that if a conflict comes up, we are, we have money on, on, on deck to be able to, and, you know, in a relationship on deck to be able to access that as needed. That was kind of my thinking initially. And of course, this is brand new, so, um, I'm open to any way of, of proceeding.
Sure. No, I, I, I just wanted to make it clear. So the, the twenty-five, or a part of the twenty-five thousand, let's say, would be if we needed to hire outside third party. Okay, okay.
Absolutely. That's it. I wanted to make sure that we had something in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So for twenty-twenty, twenty, for twenty-twenty-two, because we've had so many vacant positions, we will have some, um, money to draw on. If we get this all figured out and we need to implement something ASAP, uh, there is still some money in the twenty-twenty-two budget, but of course, in the, in, you know, no, I, I am, I, I am putting all my intention and my positive thinking into idle, you know, uh, what am I trying to say? Uh, wages cushion or something like that, you know what I mean? And so I wanted to make sure that if we, you know, as we work through this, we have them, we have something available, at least a starter amount, um, to be able to access.
And now is this per, um, per staff in the council office? Would this be five thousand person staff? Or are you just, uh, uh, just five thousand dollars for the whole office to split?
That's a great question. How beautiful would it be if?
Right, okay.
Um, that would be, I think I would even feel to me, you know? And I'll look through and I'll, um, help, I'll sort of decide on, cause for example, it may give one of us enough to go to, one or two of us enough to go to an in-person conference. Uh, but I want to try to rotate it, you know what I mean? So that folks have opportunities every other year or something like that to go in person. But, you know, now that we still have virtual options, they tend to be a little less expensive. They're certainly less expensive for travel. So my hope would be that we would kind of, I could get their plans and I could kind of say, okay, I'd like to see the, you know, okay, a person X, you know, go ahead and do this, this in-person conference this year, but then next year, person Y. I was also thinking, um, Rachel do things like that. So, um, I'm working, but basically, I guess the long and short of it is five thousand for everyone. I will come up with a structure and let them submit to me. I'll make some decisions and we'll try to rotate through, um, the opportunity so that everyone has an opportunity to get.
Um, so I was just looking at the full budget and I kind of got lost in there. So I'd like to make some time, we need to maybe go over that. So I'm ready for the, um, next budgets and some discussions. But, um, a couple of questions. So the money, we get a some, you get a some amount of money to manage however you want? Is that why you're kind of, you don't have to go to council for approval? Or, or is this something that you?
I, I guess this is the twenty-twenty-three agent budget request, right? So, um, and, and President Furman, you know, I'm new too, so we could talk a little bit about, if you can help me with sort of the nuances of this. But as department head, I believe I can submit, um, this agency request and, and it will go through the process that way. I obviously wanted to come to you all first and let you know what's, what, what's on my mind in case there were any really big red flags, um, or any additional things that you all wanted me to consider. But I, I would love it if, if President Furman also could maybe help answer that question as we figure this out, this new territory.
I mean, we can, that's okay. I can, I can, I can follow, um, even with Dave, um, if that's the case. And then the other question, you know, we have these, um, stipend money that we get every year and it just resets. Um, and we can use, we can pass that money to give to another alder if they need it for a conference or whatever. So, um, is, can we transfer that money, you know, if we wanted to, to some of these funds at, at some point, would that be also something that you don't, we don't need to go to council? We can just do it like when I transfer money, when we transfer money to each other?
That is a really great question because you're right that right now you all can do that at will with, with each other. As long as you have money in there, you can do that. Um, in the past, from what I can gather from digging into the budget and looking at the past actuals, for example, for the last few years, um, it looks like that's what was informally done, is sort of settling up at the end of the year with leftover. Because on average, the alder expense accounts on, on average are not completely depleted most years. So there on average is money that goes back into the general fund every year from that. But what I've, what I've seen in the, in the budget, what I've been able to kind of glean from that is that, for example, a staff conference, uh, so a staff member goes, settled up at the end of the year with whatever's left over. I wanted to formalize and trans, make it more transparent by kind of, you know, clearly allotting some money for that. Um, but I don't think that precludes a discussion about what you want to do with the alder expense accounts. Um, I don't think I can just, I don't feel as comfortable as perhaps it had been done maybe in the past. From what I can see in the, in the books, I, I don't feel as comfortable, uh, relying on that after the fact, uh, without some, I don't know, you know what I mean? I kind of want to have something in the budget upfront, clear. If we have a situation, obviously that's a conversation for all of you here, um, and for, you know, and so on. But I'm open to discussing, you know, what you want to do with that. Or if you want to, if you want to, you could formalize a process, even if it's internal to us, about how to handle those extra funds at what points and, and so forth also.
Okay, thank you, Karen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alder Figaro Cole, Alder Bennett.
One of our previous meetings. Um, but I am very interested in seeing a breakdown of how our budget or how our, um, I forget what the line item is called, but how are, how are funds have been used in the past? Cause from what I understand, a lot of alders don't use their full amount. So I, I would like to, it would be good to see a breakdown of how that money has been used in the past. Or how much of it has been specifically, I guess.
I do have, I'm gonna see here.
Go down that rabbit hole right now. Um, we, we can certainly, um, get you that information, Alder Bennett, if that's something of interest to you. Um, but I think this was a good introduction to where we are with the budget. Um, you see that we do have some pretty tight deadlines to figure this out. Um, this will certainly be a topic in our future. If there's, uh, particular data you want, Alder Bennett, please, please, uh, request it from Karen and. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, it's, uh, getting, it's getting late. We've got a few more items. I think we can be, again, continuing, hopefully be pretty quick on them. Um, seven, two, one, one, zero, um, council office update. I wanted, uh, obviously we got an update on the fifteenth from, from Karen. Um, uh, more, uh, people know what's going on in the council office, um, and anything that might be, uh, uh, useful for, for alders now. So.
Thank you very much. So yes, since, so in addition to the budget, um, issue, uh, a few things. Interviews start tomorrow for, uh, the Legislative Administrative Assist. That, I'm very excited. Um, all the. All the approvals have gone through for posting my old position, the Legislative Analyst position. I'm just, it's in the queue now in HR just to get it up onto, onto the website. So I'm looking forward to that. And there's a few things I think, Debbie's been working really hard on. Y'all have been really enjoying your neighborhood meetings. That's, that's great. That's awesome. And Debbie's been doing a lot of work with those. And that, hearing you often about this. So I will start doing it a little bit more, which is that Debbie would like to request three weeks' notice for neighborhood meetings, getting the materials to her at that point. There are some reasons. Basically, the three weeks gives us the best chance of getting the best. Don't always know and it's a rolling basis as to who needs what, as you all know.
Karen, I would, I think at some, at some point, and I know there's, there's, there's different discussions going on about notifications. At some point, I actually think it would be useful and we can have this discussion here on people actually understanding what goes into that. And so, you know, I think when somebody hears three weeks, it's, it's like three weeks for what? And, you know, what does Debbie, what does Debbie actually do? And it's, it's really complicated, obviously. But I, but I think there's, there's value in us having a much longer discussion on understanding why that, that suggestion is there and all the different steps that take place. So I didn't want you to go too down.
Okay, I won't go too far down.
Yeah, just know that I think we can, we can carve out some time and make it clearer. So people understand that that's just not an arbitrary made up thing and hear all the steps, et cetera.
That is correct. Thank you very much, President Furman. It's not arbitrary. There's a number of things. It has to do with translations. It has to do with meeting space and postcards and mailing and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that we are happy to give you more information about. Debbie can also give you at any, you know, anytime you'd like to talk to her more as well. But, but I would like to just put that out there, especially she and I are covering the, you know, Madeline's old position. We're covering it as well. So, and we have back-to-back council meetings in July. And since Debbie is, is covering the work on the consent agenda document and things like that, I just wanted to put that out there. The other thing is because we are still short-staffed and we're, we're rotating in and out of the office. If anyone, you know, just to remind you to go ahead and reach out to us before popping in, I'm really hoping once we get going, I mean, my goal is to really have a good office schedule for all of us, all five of us that we're going to have come September, October, right? To really have a good schedule for everyone so that there's, there's coverage. But right now, we're still struggling a little bit with that. Plus, when folks are having symptoms, you know, stay, stay, working remotely when you're, when you're not feeling well is part of the, the city policy for managing that. So I just want to let folks know about that. I'm sure there's a lot more to say, but that will give you kind of a flavor for some of the things. And, and, and please reach out to me. I love to hear from you. I get sad when I haven't heard from you for a while. No, I really do. I really do. I think, oh, I need to reach out. So please do. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. You are appreciated, even if we don't reach out enough. Any, any questions about the office update? Okay, seeing none. Next item on our agenda is nine. Laughing as I read nine because I should not have put nine items on the agenda. So I apologize, but obviously there was a lot going on. Bay, 71798, what is hybrid? I, I put this on because as promised, when we started the hybrid discussion, I wanted to make sure we had room to, to have any, any further discussion tonight. There's nothing prepared for tonight. There is obviously a mock meeting that everybody is aware of tomorrow. If you can attend in person, please attend in person. I think we have one or two Alders that are going to volunteer to be virtual. So people can see what that looks like when you're in the room. But I will say the virtual experience will very much be similar to what the current virtual experience is like. So Alders don't necessarily need to experience that virtual experience. I think it's really understanding what the changes are in that room and understanding what the virtual Alders look like and the virtual staff, et cetera. There's an agenda for tomorrow that should hopefully make the meeting show a few examples of how it will work. But so far, IT has been doing a great job of iterating based on feedback. I participated in two mock meetings so far. We had a bunch of Alders that participated in. And one of those, the last one before that was just staff. And definitely learning a bunch of stuff from that and look forward to getting feedback tomorrow and, and making Alders just more comfortable with being in the room with these, this new technology. So is there any questions about what is hybrid for, for our council? Any questions about what we passed? Alder Conklin, go ahead.
Thank you, President Furman. Not really a question about what hybrid is. More so of a question about logistics tomorrow. So with this agenda that we're getting like, and we're going through it, like, is this a real agenda? Is this like serious? This is all just made up?
Yeah, yeah. So I, I'm sorry that, that we probably weren't more clear about that. I mean, there, there will be no decisions made tomorrow. This is a, literally a mock meeting. And the, the purpose of the agenda was to do some examples of different things that happen at the meeting. So you can see what that looks like, but no, no, nothing real. I, I don't know if the staff has some ideas. IT staff, I know, had a lot of fun at the second mock meeting with, with, with what, what the, those actual agenda items are. But no, there's nothing, there's nothing, nothing real tomorrow other than some scenarios.
Okay, so it's mostly for us to learn the equipment, how to use the microphones. So we bring our, we bring our own computers then, I assume, and all that. Okay.
Yep, and it's a good opportunity to just, you know, feel more comfortable and then also provide feedback. I think, you know, the more view, views we get of, of what's planned, I think the more helpful it is. So thank you, Alder Conklin. Alder Paulson?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Is there actually an agenda with items somewhere?
So there was, in the, in the meeting, the meeting was updated today in your calendar and it should have an attachment. If it doesn't, I could send it to you. But it, but, but it's, it's not a real agenda. It's a script. Yeah, we're going to have like, you know, agenda item one and, you know, it will be made up in the moment. And we're going to try doing a Q and A with staff and having staff present and having a member of the public stand there, which will be, you know, another staff member. You know, just, just to see what that experiences. But no, there's nothing, there's nothing real.
Okay, because it's not in the agenda that's linked, it's not in the agenda that's posted in Legista.
Correct, because there is no, there is no real, yeah, there's no actionable agenda. That's just more of an example script. And if you, if you don't find it on the calendar entry, let me know. But yeah, to be clear to you and any of the members of public that are watching, we, we do not have, we're not making any decisions tomorrow. We don't have a real agenda. It's, it's just a, here's an example of somebody testifying on something.
All right, yeah, I see it now on the, on the attached to the calendar. I was looking at the, looking at the online Legista or looking at the link that was set in the, the meeting schedule. And that it just, it's not present in that one. So that's fine.
Thank you, Alder Heck.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, but I think Alder Paulson just figured it out. It's in your Outlook calendar. It's not in the legislative calendar. Yeah.
Yeah, I just assumed those were the same document. So that was my, my fault.
Always thank you, Alder Heck, for clarifying that. Any other questions, thoughts on hybrid? We'll say that bleeds into our next item, future agenda items. Item 10, 72122. We, we will have discussion at some point after. So in July, we'll have discussion about what, what this looks like for committees. So, you know, just, just a reminder that where we saw and talked about what hybrid looks like for committees. I'm hoping we could actually experience our first council meeting in person and get some feelings and tips from that. Wanted to just quickly review some of the things that I have in mind for the next agenda and open it up for feedback. The, the mayor's office has asked to do a presentation on the Madison Forward Fund. The deadline for applications is, I believe, July 3rd. And so at our July 6 meeting, it will be before the funds will have been awarded. Staff wanted an opportunity in a venue to present the history of the fund, how selections are being made. And hopefully, you know, Alders will be given a notice that, that will be taking place here. Have an ability to do a Q and A there. And then it's obviously a video that we can provide to people that can't make it to get a much better overview, opposed to having to go watch every one of the, the meetings or just read a press release. So a little bit different than what we've been doing with format for C C E C, but it seemed to be the best venue to, to get an update, a brief update about the Madison Forward Fund. And, and have, if people have questions for staff, one of the venues that you could use would be that meeting at C C E C. It is expected that we will likely hear from residents that applied and didn't get the funds. And so we certainly want residents to be, we want Alders to be prepared and understand, you know, what went into the process and how things get picked, et cetera. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not like opposed to that happening, but I guess I'd be interested in the future, maybe considering the use of a kind of informational hearing. I think that is what is described in our ordinances as a, just for the full council. And, you know, potentially now that we've moved our C C E C meetings to, you know, to a different night, there's a potential to use the time before the council meeting, potentially for things like this that aren't necessarily C C E C related, but don't have a good home otherwise. And that, I think, is a, is a forum where it doesn't have to get in front of some of the items we've got here. I think it also doesn't allow for public comment on those items. And there's a couple of other just small differences. So at least for the future, I think, I know in the past that used to be used by former councils. We haven't done it in a couple of years, but I, I think it'd be worth considering for items like this.
I appreciate that, Alder Foster. I think there's definitely a deadline where they're trying to get this done at a certain point and didn't, didn't figure out something sooner. But I really do like that idea because as you, as you know, we do have a ton of things on our agenda. Alder Figaro Cole?
I was wondering if you'd be so kind to share your screen.
Yeah, I can certainly.
If you go and look it up.
No, I can do that.
Thank you so much.
And on my screen probably has some stuff that isn't necessarily in Legista yet either. So I think there's probably some value when you guys see and what I'm reading. So give me one second and I will do that. Thank you. Okay, I am sharing my screen on the spreadsheet that I've been working with. We're, we're going to, I'm going to try to do a better job of having this planned out a little bit further in advance. But you can see some of that's starting to take form. So for our 76 meeting, some of the things, and I don't know if this will all make it because these are a lot of items and we want to try to prioritize. But Madison Forward Fund, do you want to do an update on a social event? Because we'd like to try to, to get something during the summer. IT is going to do an update on the 311 consultant. So we have an idea of what's going on with 311 project. I think it's time to do an update on where the TFOG's Implementation Work Group is. I'm hoping to have a, an actual document out to everybody before the meeting. But worst case, I will review that at the meeting and it won't be that complicated. What work did that committee do? What's left? And you will see one of the items that, that certainly is, and what should be the future of that? Is that a useful subcommittee for us to have or, or likely, which is my preference. And we'll talk about more in that update is I think we can do that work and it's a big part of the work that we're doing here at C C E C. We need to talk more about the referendum that TFOG's Implementation Work Group was talking about. There's an item for video recording of B C C meetings, talking about, you know, actually making sure all of our virtual meetings are recorded and what that entails, et cetera. There's been a lot of desire to talk more about our meeting length. And I really appreciate that some people have some good ideas on changing things around. So I want to get that discussion rolling and share, have people share some of their ideas and see if we can figure out some next steps on restructuring our council meetings to move and, and really look at the length. We will continue having council office updates. You know, I'm sure Karen will have some, some updates for us, even though it's only a week from today. Just to see out in the future, we've got stuff like checking in on hybrid after, after the hybrid meeting happens, starting some of the discussion on the committee stuff, looking at the B C C structure. The, the mayor is available for our meeting on the, one thing that she had done in the past is give updates at C C E C. And I think I'd like to try that. We could also consider that as a, as an informational update before our council meeting. I'll talk to the mayor and Alder Foster about maybe, maybe that is a good, a good thing to experiment with is having to be the mayor before council meeting at 6 o'clock. Do that update that she would have done at C C E C. That could also open it up to a lot of, we can look at that. And something, just some of the other things, kind of looking further out is district reports, the future district reports, oversight, performance review of the chief of staff, figuring out conference report policy. I'm not going to go into any more detail than that for now, but I will bring this back up if anybody has questions. Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
I'm curious about what are we discussing for the, for the, oh my God, I don't have any, oh yeah, the Madison Forward Fund? Because their, their application process expires on the 3rd already, so.
Yeah, expectations of what to expect from the rewarding of the, you know, the, what? If people don't know how the funds are going to be rewarded, awarded and picked, talk about that. Talk a little bit more about the history. I think it's clear that some Alders, you know, have just seen press releases, didn't have that much background. You know, staff is thinking like a five or 10 minute presentation max and just really give Alders an opportunity to ask questions. I think this is going to generate certainly questions, you know, once, once things are awarded. Appreciate all the work that people have done getting that word out. But I think really getting a good summary is the point to that presentation.
Yeah, I would love to get future presentation of the progress of the program. And I would love to have that presentation, you know, weeks ago. Yeah, I mean, I had to do a lot of the in for this before I wrote that, I put the blog up. And, and it seems amazing, but yeah. I just, I would like, I would like that, that again in the future, just getting an update on how the success of the program or how is that working?
Okay.
Thank you.
We could, we'll figure something out there. Thank you, Alder Figaro Cole. Alder Foster?
One item for a future meeting, I don't, I don't know when, but an update on kind of the Legista upgrade and future kind of enhancements or upgrades related to Legista would be another one.
Thank you, Alder, Alder Bennett.
Yes, I have to say, I share in my fellow Alders sharing that this, that the, we should have received a Madison Forward Fund presentation two weeks ago. I think it's, I, I found it pretty crappy that many Alders didn't find out about this opportunity or, or just saw press releases the day of. And that was their introduction to something that could significantly benefit people. Unless I missed a memo or something. And I would also, one question I have is I've heard from community members that there hasn't been communication in this, from the city about whether or not at receiving these funds would impact people's ability to get future funds. Or it was something of that nature. I hope I'm explaining that right. But I think there needs to be more transparency and, you know, potential consequences of the Madison Forward Fund that hasn't been discussed in the public yet. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Alder. I mean, I, so I would say if those are questions you want answered, but before, you can certainly reach out to, reach out to Karen. We'll make sure the right staff member gets in touch with you. I just want to note, I mean, there, there was a literally a committee called the Madison Guaranteed Income Pilot Program Advisory Task Force that some of your colleagues, including one that's here this evening, was appointed to when she, when she became Alder. Those meeting notices went out. There were 13, I guess, 12 meetings. This, this didn't come out of nowhere. I understand that some of it was approved before this class came in. But there, there was, and, and that doesn't also mean that there's not room for, for more communication. But when Alders were appointed to committees, there was that committee. So I'm, I'm sorry that people had missed that and I'm sorry people had missed notices for those meetings. I'm always a fan of improved communication, but this idea that this thing, nobody knew about it. And, you know, and all of a sudden it popped out of nowhere. It's just, it's just not the case. Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead. No, Alder Bennett, did you have your hand up?
Sorry, I.
Oh, go ahead, Alder Figaro Cole. Go ahead. I apologize.
I, I mean, again, I, I went ahead and read all the documentation online. So Alder Bennett, if you want more information, we can talk. We can talk to staff or I can point you to exactly um your concerns, but the staff, according to the group. They will provide all that counseling for each of the applicable applicants and explain to them how these funding impacts. Additional funds that they may have with other resources. So the, the website is pretty well put together. So I, I can, I can share with you the link for that piece of information. Oh, and I put that on my blog, except that it's in Spanish, sorry. I made sure that I, I focused on that part, but I, I only put it in Spanish. I was too tired. I didn't need the English translation, sorry.
Thank you, Alder Figurall Call. Attorney Haas, is there, um, is there something you wanted to clarify?
Ju- just a slight word of caution that this agenda item is to discuss placing items on future agendas. And we shouldn't delve too deeply into the topic that you want to discuss at future meetings, since it's not on the agenda.
I, I appreciate that reminder. I'm glad you're here, Attorney Haas. Um, and that, that put a hand down. Um, thank you. Um, uh, I think that's a good reminder for us to remember when we're going over this is not to go too far into detail because we didn't notice that. Um, the only other thing I would mention that we need to talk about before July uh twenty-first um is our budget again. So um please, please, if you have suggestions on things that you want to see in the budget, let Karen know. Um, uh, we, we, I don't, we don't have any particular format because this is the first time we're doing it like this on, here's the things that you should be preparing. But, you know, certainly be ready to um explain to your colleagues um here at C C E C why, why you're asking for whatever you're asking for. Um, if it, you know, it doesn't come from the council office and obviously Karen can certainly uh answer any questions about the stuff that she's requesting. Um, if people have it, but hopefully we can get um, you know, a, a C C E C sign off on that request before it goes out. Um, and then just, just so everybody knows, this, this still goes through the normal budget process, so Alders will have the ability to amend the council. Uh, budget, just like, you know, you would any other um department's budget uh during budget season. Any other future topics? Um, again, I really do want to try to get better with, with the planning, so expect this to be um. A, a topic that we will continue with and I will try to be um posting more. So people have a little bit um predictability of, of what that stuff is gonna look like and um have some time to review material, et cetera, before. Seeing no further um discussion, um, uh, is there any, um, I, I guess I would entertain a motion to, to adjourn. Looks like Alder Heck is gonna do it. Um, Alder Conklin will second it. And any objection to unanimous consent? Everybody have a great evening. Thank you.